How are you?
How are you?
Darb. So happy.
Are we done firefighting?
We're pausing for the moment.
Okay.
They do. They have a bunch of car coming up that might need just lit up.
There was one right by Highway 5, way down through, he shot by. It was new too, it was real fresh. It was not very big, it was.
It was crazy out of nowhere. I was at a pool party yesterday in West Sacramento, it was 103 degrees and then we leave, like three hours later, it's pouring rain and like, what? The outflow winds are. It was insane. So they won't know until they all pop up.
Yeah.
It's gonna rain tomorrow morning.
Here.
That's what I heard when you were.
Good evening. This is the time and place for the City of St. Helena Planning Commission regular meeting, Tuesday, September 2nd, 2025. Could you call the roll, please?
Commissioner Anderson? Here. Commissioner Covell? And Chair Warner?
Here. I noticed they went a little bit out of order. Commissioner Anderson, would you like to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. So our next item is a public forum. This is an opportunity for the public to address the commission on items of interest to the public that are not listed on the agenda. Because of restrictions imposed by the Brown Act, the commission may not engage in discussion or take action on matters not described on the agenda. I'd like to just ask if there's any member of the public that would like to address the commission at this time in the public forum. Seeing none, I think we can move on to the consent items. Our consent item is only one tonight, which is the Planning Commission minutes for August 19th, 2025. Members of the commission or the public may ask that any items be considered individually for purposes of considering alternative action, for extended discussion, or for public comment. Unless that is done, one motion may be used to adopt all recommended actions. Do I have any member of the public or member of the commission who would like to consider the minutes individually? Seeing none, I'll ask for a motion for approval of the August 19th minutes.
I motion to approve the minutes.
Second?
Second.
Call the roll, please.
Commissioner Anderson? Yes. Commissioner Covell? And Chair Warner?
Yes. Thank you. We have one public hearing tonight. It's 5.1, zoning ordinance amendment to revise Chapter 17.24.050B, 1 and 17.32. Definition of terms, visibility triangle of Title 17 of the St. Helena Municipal Code regarding standards for vision triangles. Do we have a staff report?
Yes, we do. Thank you, Chair, and members of the Planning Commission, Maya DeRosa, Community Development Director. And this item is in follow-up to a discussion that we had on May 20th. And I am going to, let's see, I didn't test this before here. Oh, that's right. Let me try. See if it lights up. You want to come over? So just to recap, and I know Commissioner Covell was not here for that discussion, so I'll just go through some of the discussion items that we addressed for that item. So our current zoning code does codify how we are to uphold standards for measuring vision triangles. So we have a maximum height that currently says vegetation walls, fences inside the triangle should not be more than two feet. And the length and area within a vision triangle is 35 feet on each edge. And we also have a public work standard, specifically number 324 relating to vision triangles, that is in conflict with our current code that says the measurement should actually be 25 feet. So this was part of our internal discussions, realizing that we should definitely clean one or the other up and make it fit what is necessary and prevent any confusion in the community. So this, more background is in January of last year, the fire chief, fire inspector, looked at approximately almost 300 street corners. They found 66 to be out of compliance based on our code standard of the 35 feet with the two-foot height maximum. And then the city launched on a media and marketing campaign to make all the public aware in the summer of 2024 what the standards are and what the vision triangle requirements should be. Go back here. You want to do it? Okay. You can just go back to, thank you. And then I also want to thank the fire department, specifically Alec Vidler, for some additional photos that I'll be sharing in the presentation. So we have actually another historic properties. This is a photo of Grace Episcopal Church on the corner of Oak and Spring that currently has a historic stone wall, which although it meets the 25 feet where it's of the visibility, it's 42 feet, 42 inches, excuse me, in height. So if we were to amend the code as what we're recommending, it would conform, but obviously there's a concern about making them take down what is considered to be probably a historic feature of their current property. There's another picture of it with the yellow line showing where the two feet would be. And this is another picture of a different property at 1702 Madrona. This stone wall is 36 inches tall. It's in compliance with the 25-foot visibility and 42-inch fence wall height. But if we were to require the enforcement, it would require removal. And you can see that's a nice looking wall. And so the feedback that we got after the discussion with the planning commission in May was generally supporting increasing the allowable height of fences up to 42 inches. And there was also support to reduce the length of that vision triangle to 25 feet. So we've prepared a red line ordinance for your consideration in response to those policy comments and direction. The first would be specifically to subsection B1 of Section 1724050F of the code. And so that's just showing you the strikeout that we would be removing the two feet and changing that to 42 inches. And the next part of the code, you can switch it, is in the definitions, section 17.32, we call out specifically the measurements, and that would be changing that from the 35 feet to the 25 feet. And lastly, we have, that goes along with that definition, a visual graphic, which is 17.32E, and so we would make the same adjustment to that graphic. The last time for discussion, this wasn't in your staff report, but after some further conversations with our building official, and by the way, we have the whole team back here, thank you all for attending, both police, building, and fire here. We wanted to share with you some of the challenges that happens in the field when, it's one thing when we're looking at solid hedges and solid fences, but a question came up, well, how should we deal with fences that are generally open, or at least 50% open, or in the previous case with the historic stone wall? So this is something that we could put in the red line and forward on to the council with the recommendation, but I just wanted to give it to you for consideration. One would be adding a section for exemptions with various situations for exemptions in the vision triangle, and that would be non-conforming historic stone walls on properties listed on the national, state, or local register, or what was, we call our HP overlay. And the other consideration would be if the fences are open 50% or more within a visibility triangle with posts that do not exceed the maximum allowable height in the vision triangle, they should also be considered exempt. And that one is consistent with, if you look actually, in one of the attachments to the staff report, the City of Napa actually codified that fences that are open at least 50% are exempt from their visibility triangle height standards. So although I believe theirs is 36 inches, but this concept is the same, is that they're recognizing that having fences that are somewhat transparent shouldn't necessarily be held to the same standard. And so this is the recommendation in your staff report, that we make a sequo finding that it's exempt pursuant to 15061B3 and adopt the ordinance as noted in the sections here on the screen. And I'm available for any questions. And also, if you do want more background or a recap of all the code enforcement and all the various cases that the fire department investigated in the field, we have our experts back there, Alec Vidler and Chief Sorenson, and of course, the building official and our Lieutenant Darb. Thank you.
Thank you.
And Director Leach too, who's the Caltrans height expert.
Thank you. At this time, before we open up for any public comments, any particular questions for staff on the report? We'll have time for discussion when we bring it back, but any questions to staff on the report or recommendation?
I just, so, thank you for that. Hi, everybody. Just as you were presenting, I hadn't seen the presentation yet. I think I have no problems with the recommendation. I just have a question. In some of the photos, for example, I think maybe the next photo that's on the slideshow, if you go to the, or the next, next one, that one? Is that corner where there's a tree, if it's in the visibility corner, there's words of vegetation and hedge? I think my understanding is it's more about a visibility, like making sure people can see past the corner. So if there's a tree planted, is there anything that says something like, you know, tree branches are maintained like above eight feet? So that, you know, between 42 and eight feet? Like, you can have a tree there, just, it just has to be maintained. Do you want to, or I'll let one of the staff there, unless you want to, Mr. Director Leach?
Yeah, I think myself and other staff can tag team that. I know that as part of the tree ordinance, they have to be limbed up. I believe it's 12 feet. Correct me if I'm wrong.
Yeah, I think the number was like seven and a half feet. The idea is that a car would pull up to the intersection and be able to clearly see. So if you're sitting in a car, seven and a half feet is reasonable.
Right.
Thank you. I just, because I saw vegetation, and then in the later slide, I saw like particularly hedges. So then I just wasn't sure if, in the photos, like the stone wall, the one on 1702 Madrona with a nice stone wall, it has a tree there. So it seems like you can have vegetation if it's a tree, it just has to be maintained higher. And I don't know if we need to add any sort of clarification for that, just to separate trees from hedges or vegetation from hedges.
Yeah, it's in our detail that we were sending out to citizens. We basically asked them to keep that area free between the low point and the high point of a tree. Basically, that had to remain open from any kind of vegetation or obstruction.
Thank you. That's it.
Any other questions for staff? At this point then, let's open it up for any members of the public who may have comment or thoughts on the proposal. Seeing none, I'll bring it back to the commission. I will open it up for discussion, but would it be useful for my fellow commissioners for me to recap a little bit of the discussion I recall we had on May 20th, I think? And Commissioner Anderson, I'm not sure you were here either, so neither one of you were here. I thought it might be useful to recap, particularly because Commissioners Lopez and Firdak had specific comments at that time. And I might summarize it as follows. We were very much as a commission relying on the public safety assessment of our public safety experts, both police and fire, and appreciated that. It's very clear that our, our public safety determination was that either 36 or 42 inches would be safe from a standpoint of the visibility triangle, and that 25 feet would be also safe from a visibility triangle standpoint, from a public safety standpoint. So that, that was in the record on May 20th, it's in the record here on the staff report. However, as we discussed it, none of us basically had any particular expertise in public safety. We were relying on our public safety experts, but Commissioner Lopez was concerned, I think it's safe to say, about a margin of safety. And his concern was that he thought that 42 inches was not adequate as a margin of safety, and that 36 would be a better margin. On the other hand, as we looked at the Caltrans manual, basically for visibility, Mr. Leach pointed out that that has a 42-inch visibility line of sight. All of us talked a little bit about what about cars that are lower or higher? What is everybody's line of sight when you turn a corner? And at that point, I think Commissioner Lopez was pretty much sticking to his recommendation that we limit it to 36 inches. Everybody was fine with a 25 feet, as I recall. Commissioner Firdak, on the other hand, was comfortable generally with both 36 and 42 for the precise point that looking at jurisdictions nearby us in the North Bay, including the list you have in your staff report, most of those jurisdictions that identify at a height limit use 36 inches, not 42. There are some around the country, very clearly there are those that use 42, and even around the Bay Area, those use 42. So I thought our consensus at the time, in a way, was a bit indecisive, but we basically left it as, okay, maybe we let the city council decide between 36 inches and 42 inches, while at the same time, we had a consensus on, on the 25 feet was, was fine. I don't really think it's necessarily prudent for us to punt stuff to the city council, particularly where it's a public safety issue, so I would be fine with a staff recommendation of 42 inches. But I wanted you all to know that Commissioners Lopez and Commissioner Firdak also talked a little bit about the 50% open space precedent. And as I recall, Chair Potte made the point that even with picket fences, if you say 50% open space, well, in certain ways, that's really not as visible as you would think going around a corner. He was, I know, not comfortable with the 50%. I know you've recommended that as a potential exemption, and I think you've also recommended the historic preservation exemption. My own opinion on that, frankly, and I'll then open it up for all, for both of you to have some opinions here, is I don't think you can, if you decide that, that 36 inches is the public safety margin, I don't think you can exempt anybody. You know, even if it's based on historic preservation, you're talking about public safety here, particularly in traffic and with people bicycling, with pedestrians, kids, et cetera. So I'm not so sure I'm comfortable supporting either of those two exemptions that staff has suggested might, might be available. So bottom line is, I think basically, most of the commissioners were comfortable with either 36 or 42. I think it's safe to say that Commissioner Lopez was the one that, who was not comfortable with anything other than 36. I summarize that just so that you all have a sense of the discussion we had, and particularly because neither Commissioner Lopez nor Commissioner Firdak are here. So with that, I'll basically open it up for further discussion and potentially a vote.
Thank you for that context. I am comfortable with either. I understand wanting it to be shorter, especially since I have kids, I want it to be safe. With this type of thing, I think I'm most comfortable kind of defaulting to the experts and people that have studied this, since mine would be feelings-based and theirs would be fact-based. But either is fine with me. Or doing something, in the other cities' codes, there were, where was it? Different heights. Santa Rosa has 36-inch maximum height with nothing over 24 inches in the first five feet behind the curb line. So doing something varied like that would be acceptable to me also.
Your comments, Commissioner?
I have a question. I agree with Commissioner Anderson, and thank you for that summary. I also have kids, and he, for the longest time, couldn't ride the rides because he couldn't reach the 36-inch height thing. So I get the, the height issue. So I, for me, it's a safety thing. I think, I think everybody else is a safe, it's a safety issue. I, I am curious to know with codes like this, if someone were to be in an accident, is there any liability on the city for things like this, codes?
We, we don't have our city attorney here, but I am an attorney, and, and I think that as long as the city has based its, its decisions on, its, its fact-based decisions on public safety, I think the likelihood of liability is fairly low. That doesn't mean that if there's some negligence on the part of the city in enforcing the height limit, or if there's some owner responsibility, property owner responsibility, that'd be a separate matter. I can tell you as a lawyer that I'm sure that if there are a serious accident, that in most cases, regardless of what we do here, both the city and the property owner would likely be sued. But I think the likelihood of liability for the city, I think, would be fairly low, given that this has been very directly evaluated for public safety.
I, I think then I would leave it to the team who, you know, can prove that it's a factual safety, no issue. Again, I think, I, I do have kids like Commissioner Anderson, so my general thing would be shorter. I just, actually just took all my hedges out, so. But again, I'm going to leave it to, I, I think the 25 reduction is good because I think 35 is quite, quite long. But then the height, I'm going to leave it, I can, I can relate to Hector, so, or Commissioner Lopez, who's not here, so thanks for that. And I also, I think I've talked to Inspector, and I realize also for people who have fences, they might be trying to keep their dogs in or their, their kids in too. So too low of a fence would, you know, a dog could just jump over and/or kids, I have both, so I relate to both sides. So I think the priority would be just safety, public safety on this one for me. And then people can choose to go lower if they want to, if they, you know, want to do that, so.
Thank you for that. And I also might point out, this reminded me of one of the other context items. I think that, and I think this is in the record, don't need to reaffirm it, but we were discussing on May 20th, the fact that, that there have not been kind of epidemic or excessive numbers of accidents in the city. Knock on wood, knock on wood. So we're not a city that has extensive risk in terms of traffic accidents. I might also say that Commissioner Lopez felt differently and was pointing out that his experience was that, that accidents do happen, and depending on what you said as your safety standard, there could be more accidents. But for myself, I'm comfortable with the 42 inches as recommended by the staff. And again, based on, if, if we experience anything in the future that shows an uptick in, in problems, we, that we and the city council can always come back and amend. Sure, absolutely.
On the last image of the slideshow, it's just kind of funny because I do live right very close to there. That particular turn is very difficult on Pratt Ave, making the right onto Main Street. And I've always struggled with the speed and visibility there. And also, just walking on that sidewalk with, you can't really push a stroller on that, so you kind of have to walk out in the street there. And then the cars that whip around from Main Street to Pratt on that right turn, it's pretty dangerous if, and so. Side, side note, but since this image is literally up, I thought it would be a good time to say something about that corner.
Is that 42 inches for that hedge, or is it higher than that? If we know?
The inside is not quite 42, but the larger hedge towards, is far into the 25 feet. So you, you can see, see the shadow in the middle?
Yep.
That's on the street there. So if you're looking at the shadow, you can see to the left side of the shadow where it reaches the gravel. That's how far back that needs to be cut at the 25 feet. If it was 35, it would be the second shadow on the left, way, way back.
And that would apply to the other side as well?
Other side, and it needs to come off the sidewalk. And this is, you know, out of, out of the whole, if you go to 42 and 25, there's nine gross corners in St. Helena. Okay? If you go with the 36, there's 17 fences that need to be cut down that have been there forever. So this is the, this is, these are the main ones, and I know Allison, Allison and Charter Oak was a problem, they cut theirs down, that, that one looks good. That's a wire fence that's been around for probably 60, 70 years. It's an old ornate one. But at 36, it's going to need to be cut, and it's a see-through fence with an English laurel behind it. I think everybody knows that one. But it was eight, 10 feet high, but it's been removed. So there's nine that would be, that would need to be, and we all know, Madrona and Spring Mountain Road, the right turn as you come down the hill, that one needs some attention. That, that fence is too high and the vegetation is too much, and it's not that far out. But 42, I, I believe the fence would be spared, but the vegetation needs to be definitely brought back. Plus, there's also another standard is the daylighting, which is measured from a different, to make it even worse, it's measured from a different area. Theirs is, is measured from the return, so after the curve, they, the police measure 20 feet from after the curve. We are out into the middle of the street where the two- We are out into the middle of the street where the two curbs come together, and we come out to a point, and we go 25. It's similar, it's not the same, because all curves are, are different. Yeah. And if you roll to, I have one more comment, if you don't mind. If you, can you roll, Xenia, to the Episcopal Church? There you go. All right, so that's your perfect, that's your 25 feet, Episcopal Church, it's been there. Just think of it this way, is that enough to see somebody at the corner? That's 42, but really, that could be six foot tall at 25 feet. You just can't be in the 25-foot at, it would have to be at 42. Is that right, Phil? Yep. So if you can live with coming down the street, I took this kind of, this would be the passenger looking at the scene there. Is this enough for you to safely see somebody at the curb ready to cross? So.
Thank you, that's very helpful. Question?
As far as the, you might want to stay.
Yeah. I got answers.
As far as the exemption for historical, how many, how many fences are we talking about? Like this one?
That's a good question. In other words, if we were to do 36 inches, how many rock walls are there that are of historical significance?
Mostly old farmhouse classic picket fences, not too many stone walls. You saw that, that beautiful one that's?
Church?
Yeah, that one. That one's 36 on the nose, and the Episcopal's 42. I would say, how many would have to come down? I believe with 36, there'd be 17 that need to come down. And I, I came off the fire line on my day off and ran down, because I know Hector wanted that number, and we raced through all 300 corners, and I didn't get out and measure, but I know 36 and 42. 30, 42 is roughly just below these shades right here. This is about, this is about 42 right there. 36 is somewhere in this range. Just, just as I'm standing here to give you some reference.
Thank you, and I think we, we also, if you wanted to, if we were to go back, that sounds consistent with the May 20th data as well that you provided, so.
Right. So nine, nine at 42 is, was a problem, and then 17 if you go to 36, and then 66 if you stay with the 35 and 24.
Right.
Those aren't all historic preservation.
No, they're not all historic preservation. It sounds to me like, and we could check on it, it sounds to me like the church one is probably one of the very few, if there, if there are any more besides those.
I have a, oops. For this one, this one makes sense, because it's a four-way stop, and everybody's pretty much looking, but the one, it's kind of like the last one, that's not a four-way spot, stop. That one, that one is like everybody's traveling pretty fast.
The Pratt and, Main and Pratt, yes. That one is, again, if you did the 42 and 25, it would need a drastic change.
Yeah. I just couldn't understand which, when you say shadows, like which, what?
Oh.
How far back is it? So go to the last slide, sorry, Xenia. The, is the current lower hedge, is that?
That's over 42.
Yeah. So, you know what, there's an, there's an exact, could we go to the Excel, Xenia, that I added?
I did not include that.
To the left of it.
So right around about here?
No, right, right at the edge of it, right there. That's the, about the 25, and then 35 would be probably out of frame.
Here, you can see here, he was pointing to like this, this part.
And the hedge would have to be cut, right?
So you're saying?
Yes, yes.
Okay. So this particular one is not compliant right now?
It's way out, it's way out. Yeah, that would have to be, even the 25, it's gonna look completely different than that. And it, the way it's measured, too, it's measured from both directions, and the, the hedge doesn't have to be cut straight in and then over, it can be cut from point to point, so it could be kind of at an angle, but it would allow a lot more visibility. And in the Excel that we had at the last meeting, we have a file of every, every corner in town, and I'm standing at the, at the 35, so you can see what that looks like, if we can, if we can find it.
Any other comments, discussions, questions? If not, are we ready for a vote?
Sure.
I will entertain a motion for approval, the staff recommendation, maybe if we go to that, Maya, the actual, or?
Just so that I can know, is this going into the city council, or is this, like, we approve this and?
No, this goes to city council for their consideration. That's right.
We don't have the final say on anything.
Okay, great, just checking.
Okay, anybody have a motion?
I, motion that we adopt the attached resolution recommending that the city council find that pursuant to SEQA guideline section 15061B3, the project is exempt and adopt an ordinance amending section 17.24.050B and 17.32, definition of terms, visibility triangle of title 17 of the St. Helena Municipal Code.
I second that.
Any further discussion on this item? If not, let's go to a vote. Call or roll, please.
Commissioner Anderson?
Yes.
Commissioner Koval?
Yes.
And Chair Warner?
Yes.
That completes 5.1. We have no other scheduled matters. Item seven is department reports. Any department reports?
Just a reminder from my announcement's last meeting, is that the meeting on the 16th is canceled, but encourage you, if you're interested, to attend the discussion on the sale of city properties that will be happening at 6:30 PM at the Firehouse. And then we do have items for October 7th, and so that's, and if you haven't given us your time off for this year, please do email Ms. Gamaro and myself, so we can finalize our agenda for the year. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other agenda items or questions for staff or meeting?
It's, it's not that important, but related to the visibility triangles, there's a really cool Instagram account called Streetcraft, and they go over all kinds of transportation layouts and city layouts, and it's really fun to geek out on.
My goodness, I've heard everything now. That's great, good. Other agenda items, forecast items?
Didn't you have some last time?
Yes, we have, we, we, again, our minutes that we approved reflect the fact that at some point, we're gonna have a evaluation of zoning code and updates on that in terms of how things have been going. And then also, we have a opportunity to have a, a working session, potentially also for staff to help answer some of the questions that came up from the public at our joint city council planning commission meeting. I think that's reflected in our minutes from the joint meeting.
And then Director Durets, I think you emailed this out, but you said something about on a upcoming planning commission, that there, you would be going over the alternate sites, right? There was, you sent it in email.
Well, actually, I think this is follow-up from the, the joint meeting that we had on the 19th. There was a request to have the council have a discussion about the alternative sites to housing on site 10, and so that will be happening on September 23rd. And there may also be another item related to that, just to talk about other ongoing housing policy considerations. So I think that might help address some of the follow-up from the meeting, and so, you know, encourage you to tune in to that meeting on the 23rd.
It's a city council meeting, not a planning commission meeting? Is that what?
Correct.
Okay.
Because, and just to be clear, there's no, it's, it's more just receive and file the report is, is really all the action is. Thank you.
Any other questions, agenda items, forecast items? If not, as Chair Potte used to say, his favorite part of the meeting was, we're hereby adjourned.
You need to gavel.
Ah, gavels, too, that's, that's too blunt.